Did my boy do okay?
Right, exactly.
And if she said anything but he was perfect or he was excellent, she said, get back over there. You didn't do something right. Yeah. Okay, we are, it looks like we are live now, so that's good. That's fine. Let me know when I can start. Ready? Okay. Good evening, welcome to the City of Groton Committee of the Whole for Monday, January 23rd, 2023. I'm going to call the meeting in order at 6:18. I apologize for the delay, but we had some technical difficulties. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Present, we have Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Carter, Counselor McCabe, Counselor Norris, Counselor Piazza, Counselor Sheffield, and City Clerk Jacob.
Okay, so we'll start with-
Finance Director Yous.
Finance Director Yous, sorry about that. All right, we will start with new business, Groton Utilities. Ron, we have three resolutions here to discuss. So walk us through these.
The first one is to cut a purchase order for Scan Optics. Scan Optics is the city's, it's the company that the city uses to scan all the documents into an electronic form to historicize, the whole city's doing that. We neglected to budget, or we didn't know we needed to budget, to historicize 36 boxes for the water filtration project. And this is the cost to allow us to get that done.
Any questions or comments on this resolution? Deputy Mayor Depot.
Can you elaborate on why you didn't budget for this previously?
Probably because it took so long for the project to finish, and the records weren't put together till Noemi actually had time just several months ago.
So was it that you thought it was going to be further in the future, or?
We have never historicized such a large project before. To tell you the truth, the cost was kind of surprising to us, but when we do the budget, we just missed it.
So have we looked at our other projects that are going on right now and budgeting for this in the future, so that this doesn't happen again?
Yes. The projects, as they come through the system, generally this just carries it.
So is this the first, so this is the first project that's been large enough that you need to hire someone to scan it in?
Yes.
And is there, do we not have, I understand for bigger projects than I know for the city, we have worked on scanning and we hired someone partly because we didn't have the equipment to scan in some of the documents that we had in the Building Department.
Right.
Are these documents that could be scanned in by staff even though it might take longer? Would it be cheaper to do it that way?
I do not believe so.
Okay, hold on. Sue? Could you come up here real quick, because Sue's our local resident expert on Scan Optics and document management. This is an extension of document management, the continuation that we're doing throughout the municipality and the utility, but this is for the specific water treatment plant project. Is that accurate, Ron?
A hundred percent.
Okay, Sue, could you give us a little bit of background to answer the deputy's question?
Certainly, to answer the question, the documents are not made up of simple eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sheets. There are drawings and other odd and unusual sizes. There are also booklets. And it's not an undertaking that we have the equipment for here in this building. We can do up to 11-by-17 maximum, so we would not be able to scan any of the drawings associated with the project. So they would have to be outsourced anyway. The other option with Scan Optics, which we leverage, is that everything is made, is OCR'd and made keyword searchable, which is why we're storing them with Scan Optics in a SharePoint backend, so that we can search the documents back well into prior history. Scanning is not currently approved by the Secretary of State as a means of record storage, but it certainly affords us the ability to be able to search the documents effectively. Sorry.
Didn't that address your question?
No, that was very good.
Okay. Counselor Sheffield.
Is there a timeframe, I guess, when we want to implement this project as far as?
The goal was to just cut a purchase order and get it done, because the boxes are all out in the middle of the floor in operations, and the goal was to clear the area.
Okay, so there's a time urgency, I guess, to clear the area. You don't want to leave them around too much longer, is basically a-
Right, we would, after they do it, they return them to us, and then we put them in a final storage space and get them out of the operations area.
Okay. And how long will this take as far as would this process, you know, to complete, or?
I'm unsure, but I think it was several weeks. It was in the proposal, but I forgot.
So we don't need to get another proposal for another invoice for more, or is this?
No, this is all-inclusive for these 36 boxes.
Okay. But do you anticipate there'll be more after this, or is that?
Not for this project.
Not for this project, okay.
Okay, Counselor Norris?
Thank you, Mayor. How are we paying for this? Is it coming out of the project, the water treatment plant rebuild project?
It's just coming out of cash on hand.
Cash on hand, okay.
Anything else?
No.
Deputy Mayor Depot.
So can you remind me what the budget for this project was?
Fifty-two million dollars.
And will this amount, does this amount not fit into or sensibly should be included in the contingency for that project, and?
That's a good question.
There was no money remaining in the project. When it closed out, we used the final bit for the legal and for the interest payment.
So when we look at the, I know that in the grand scheme of things, this is a small number, but when we look at the total cost of the project, is this scanning included in the cost of the project, or is this included in like admin services general for the utility? How does this fit into like administratively where this is categorized?
I believe we're just expensing it.
The reason I ask that is then when we look at the number, it's kind of inaccurate of what that project cost, because this is also part of what the project cost if we're doing it because the project was so big. And like I said, so in the future, for things like this, if we have a project, is this cost going to be included in the budget for the project?
Yes.
So we won't see a cost like this again after a project to request for money to scan documents?
We should not, plus it's unusual to have this amount of scanning. I mean, this was a giant project that went on for many years.
Right, but it would be fair to say that you knew it was going to be a giant project with a lot of paperwork?
But at the time the project budget was set, we actually didn't scan documents.
Okay.
Counselor Norris?
Thank you. So what changed? So are we, why are we then scanning the documents? Is it just because it's overwhelming and you don't want to like, because you're going to have to file all these papers somewhere anyway. So I know the answer, I just want you to say it.
Can I jump in on that one?
Go.
Secretary of State's office is now considering electronic documentation as being allowed for a system of record rather than maintaining paper documents or microfilm. So we are taking advantage of that opportunity to have these documents done and looking forward to that ruling from the Secretary of State for this to be our electronic records for retention purposes.
Thank you. My next question is, so, and the thing that really just kind of gets me in the ear is, is the project closed out? Yeah, I believe so. So that's what's a little twerk in my ear is the project's closed out, then someone said, oh, we need to scan, and now you're bringing it back. It makes me feel, was there an end-of-project meeting before it was closed out to discuss all these things? And I guess I'm not looking for an answer, I'm just saying that's what kind of-
There's, there's thousand, we have boxes and boxes of projects and assets that are up in the attic and operations and everywhere that over the fall, next few years, all that stuff will eventually get scanned as we can manage it through the system. And that wasn't planned in any of those projects or even foreseen. So we just have a lot of documentation that the city's required to keep. You're required to keep all hard asset documentation going forward.
Yeah, I got that. I guess what I'm asking is, so from the time the project closed to the time you decided, hey, we need to scan all this stuff, was it close enough where you could have said, well, maybe no, we don't need to finish the mechanics to close the project? I guess, I don't want to belay the conversation, but that's just what I'm thinking. I just feel like the project ended, someone woke up and said, what do we do with all this stuff? Versus having that thought process before closing out the project. That's all I'm saying.
And that could very well be the timing of the notification from the Secretary of State's office?
Right, yep.
Because that's very recent.
Yep.
And the project had neared its end or had closed-
Right.
-by the time that notification or pre-notification was made, that we, that they are considering allowing that option.
Sure. So moving forward, can we assume two things? One, that you'll start to look at putting money in projects for scanning? And two, in fiscal year '23, '25, '26, that you will have an itemized dollar figure in your budget that will address all the scanning that may have to take place in the next few years?
It's actually yes to both, because there is money in budgets to be scanning using Scan Optics.
Okay. Good, great.
There has been for a year or two.
Great, thank you.
So let me address it this way. I'm, wasn't on the project team, but I'd be willing to bet that the scanning of the documents wasn't considered part of the project.
Right.
Now, it probably should have been. And in hindsight, we probably, when we started seeing that we had five and 10 and whatever boxes, probably should have started looking at scanning then to stay on top of it, but we didn't. And so we were in the situation that we're in now. What we, what I hope that we gain from this, from a lessons learned point of view, is on our projects, that one, we keep track of this and that we recognize that document control and the paperwork is part of the project. So, because we are going to have other projects that are coming up, and they're not going to be in the $54 million range, but they are going to be in the million-dollar range. We have a project going on now with, in a pollution payment facility. So, so that's the answer. Any other, Counselor Sheffield?
Yeah, I would assume the future is now in digitizing documents going forward. And I think that's my job, that's similar at the Superior Court to scanning documentation. So it's something I've already started doing for the state of Connecticut. So it's something that a lot of governments are going to be doing anyway, so. So it's something we probably didn't think about starting off with, but I'm sure going forward, that's going to be part of the process.
And certainly, we were doing it for a convenience at one point in time, simply because we needed to make those documents accessible. The Building Department was the primary first user, and that was to make their records available versus microfilm.
Right.
Or paper. Those were the two options they had.
Counselor McCabe.
I just want to say, I'm glad that we're heading in the right direction, and I'm glad we're sitting on top of SharePoint so we can make those searches a lot easier for all of the people involved.
Much easier.
Oh, yeah.
And any other questions or comments? Any hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of February 6th.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Ty Sales, Water and Waste, Ty Sales for the meter.
Over the last few years, we've had a water meter project that has been upgrading water meters. We were given the opportunity recently to upgrade the meters that are at the airport Pfizer and the bluff meters, which feed, feed another large customer, where?
Are they in a connection crossing the river?
Oh, up across the river to Montville. So given the opportunity that we could do that, we decided to buy those meters now. So this is the purchase order to actually buy those and get them installed.
Questions or comments on this resolution? Deputy Mayor Depot.
So this is a project that we already were planning to do?
This is a project in progress, yes.
And we're just buying them a little earlier than we anticipated?
Yeah, we've been waiting for a while to buy the Pfizer meters, because they haven't been able to give us the opportunity, and all of a sudden the opportunity came up, so we pulled it forward.
So what are the meter, the meters that are being replaced? Is it because they're at end of life, or are we?
Yes, they're very old. And they're not the remote meters that we currently use.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Sheffield.
Was the pricing time constrained on the dollar figure? Was there, was there a?
No, Ty Sales has, is the only vendor that supplies these Neptune meters.
All right, so this would be the only price to be, okay.
Anyway, Counselor Norris?
Right. So this 106-832 is coming out of the project? Or is it being funded somewhere else?
It's being funded by the bonded water capital projects.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of February 6th.
So move?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Kate Wright Pierce Engineers?
As you may be aware, there's a project that was just finished design and went out to bid to replace the HVAC at the wastewater treatment facility. That, those bids will be returned and evaluated in the upcoming weeks. This bid is for Wright Pierce to do construction administration and project administration as that project moves forward. So they'll help us award the bid and help with construction services moving forward, answering RFIs and other things on the design documents, and checking construction as it moves forward.
Questions or comments on this resolution? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council of February 6th.
So move.
So move, second.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Ron. Okay, Sue, you get to say.
Can I get my notebook?
Yes, please. Okay, Real Estate, 391 Long Hill Road, purchase. Okay, who wants to take the lead?
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you're aware, we have been reviewing the property at 391 Long Hill Road. You had given previous approval for us to proceed to negotiations. Since that time, we have entered into a purchase and sale agreement with the owner, negotiated the price, and have met the requirements of the purchase and sale agreement for inspections and the Section 8-24 requirement before the Planning and Zoning Commission to determine if it was in alignment with the plan of conservation and development. So we have met all of those requirements at this point. Favorable results from the inspection reports. We have gone to the Utilities Commission to seek their approval to purchase the property, and we now look to the council to approve the purchase of the property, and we're here for discussion.
Okay, we'll open the floor for discussion, questions? Deputy Mayor Depot.
So I know we talked about this in executive session, but I mentioned this at our last meeting where it was brought up. I think the public has a lot of interest in this particular item. We're considering purchasing a property in the town. I, between that meeting and this meeting, I got a lot of feedback from people that are unhappy that we're buying a property in the town. So I have several questions. Did we, I know that we discussed that there was a search for a property, but we never advertised, did we advertise that we were looking for a property that, say, someone who owns a property that would suit our needs would be able to offer it to the city?
We did not place an advertisement for a search for property, no.
And can you tell me what the discussion and/or outcome of the Utility Commission meeting was? How did that, how did the presentation go? What was their feedback, what types of questions did they ask?
The Groton Utilities Commission meeting, there was discussion on the property. There, it did pass by a vote of four to one. The individual, that's probably what you're most interested in, the individual that voted against it has a feeling that he does not wish for the city to purchase any property, regardless of the location, not in the city or the town. He did not feel that it's appropriate for the purchase of a property.
I have several questions, is that okay?
Go ahead. Well, are there any other?
But I can wait.
All right, go ahead. Then Deputy Mayor Depot, you have the floor.
Do we currently have Basra employees working in the municipal building?
Not yet.
So is the plan to move our IT out and move Basra employees into the municipal building?
The plan is to move the IT department out and to realign the existing space that we vacate. We're not vacating very much space.
So how many IT employees are we moving out of the building?
Well, right now, there's five in the bullpen, the 400-square-foot bullpen, myself and one other. So right now, that's just us. And we have one new hire that will be coming, and then three people that are still working remotely because of the lack of space.
So nine.
Eleven of us altogether, in total. Five in the bullpen, me, one other, three working remotely, one not hired yet. That should equal 11.
Yes. And then how many Basra employees are we planning to move into the municipal building?
It's my understanding that the Basra office employees would be moving in, and that's three people.
I know that we, this was brought up, there's an intent in the future at some point to move IT to operations, right? In the?
In the long term, yes.
And how many years?
Five to seven years.
Five to seven years, you said?
Mm-hmm.
And what's the reason that that can't be done sooner?
Would you like to, or I can? Bruce has actually been working on that project and had a review done of the generator building, existing generator building, and having an addition put onto that building to make it a large enough space for the IT department. The renovations to do that, taking a building not designed for office space and putting an addition on it, came to a total of 1.7 million?
It's 1.5 million plus design fees and specification fees, which is another 157,000. And that does include civil work, which is the parking area, drainage and all that stuff like that. So we're talking right now approximately two million just to basically renovate what we call the old generation, generator building, and adding another 800 square foot addition to it to basically space what we would need to get IT over there. And the other thing that we're looking at too is electric operation too is, we had two conceptual design going forward on this facility plan. And when we looked at the numbers for the electric ops to do that over, and that's not including swing space to move them out, that price came back, that bit approximately 1.7 million dollars, plus another $170,000 for basically drawing fees, and that not including civil. So we're talking just right now without civil, about $4 million right now.
So, but that's money we plan to spend?
In the long term, yeah. In the long, about five to seven years as we plan everything out and stuff like that.
Okay. So currently, is Breeze Line still occupying space in the building?
They still obviously have the head-end space, but they have left the three office areas in the hallway. They did that at the end of the month.
Okay, are they keeping that space, or are they vacating that space eventually? What, how long?
The head-end?
Yeah.
My understanding is a year before that'll be vacated.
And how long have we been operating the way we are right now with your employees separated?
Pre-COVID.
So we, it's been that way for more than?
Three years.
Three years.
Nearly three years. And it's been detrimental, quite honestly.
Would the, the amount of space that Breeze Line is currently taking up, how many square feet is that? Once they vacate, what space does that leave in the building?
Those three offices are about 280 square feet all total, 280 square feet additional.
In the offices?
For the office spaces that, yes.
And the front-end area that's?
The front-end area is already part of another design plan.
Okay.
You're talking about the customer service, front, two offices? Those are already part of another design plan.
What's going to take up that space?
Customer service, Groton Utilities. And billing.
So the, can you remind me the parameters of the space that we need? Square footage, security-wise, and IT-wise? What are your requirements that we need? Because obviously, we operate a utility, there's security involved and all of that that is required of whatever space we occupy. Can you remind me what that is?
Certainly, so if we go back to the most recent assessment that was done in 2019, it stated that we, the IT department had a significant deficiency, that we needed 2,500 square feet, 2,471 square feet of usable space, and additional space, storage and so forth, brought us to about 3,300 square feet. We currently occupy 788 square feet.
And then I know that there was a discussion about properties in the city that weren't sufficient because of the internet capabilities, right? Because we need certain capabilities to be, to provide the service that we do. So what is that requirement? Like, what are your requirements for that type of thing?
Well, certainly, we would have to have a 500-bed pipe, because we would be the communication central between operations and also this building. That's attainable anywhere in the city, but it's the construction costs that become very expensive. And right now, if we were to look into the Thame Street area, the construction cost could be significant depending on the provider.
So the cost to move, which will take five to seven years, we've got to plan out that project, all of that stuff that we're moving to operations, you're saying is going to be nearly $4 million?
It's probably going to be more than that when we're well sending it down and done.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just going through the conceptual designs right now, trying to do a fiscal responsibility of certain designs and conceptual, and we're going through another phase right now to see if somehow we can do some, maybe a little cheaper. But again, it's- it's, this is not including civil, you know, we've got to develop a stormwater plan to a part of this project too and all that stuff. So it's, it could, it could be up to five to six million dollars by the time we're done with it.
And then?
And those are just our, our estimates too, so.
Okay. Thank you. And then, do we have an estimate for the cost of buying this building and owning and maintaining it for the next 10 years?
10 years of owning and maintaining? No, I don't believe we have an estimate on that. We do have information on the purchase and initial renovation improvements or repair costs, and that's slightly under 700,000 total. Going forward, we have reviewed the electric and water usage, certainly because we can see those. So we have looked at those for what their usage was at its peak as a salon, probably not 100% apples to, apples to apples. I don't have information on the gas usage. I do have information on the internet costs for that location. Should we proceed with it, we can tie that into the costs for work being done at the wastewater treatment facility and reduce the price for both locations. Should we not do that, then the price goes, goes up at wastewater.
Okay. And I know that the, the business that was there previously is a local, was obviously a local business. Does anyone in the utility have a relationship with that business or a personal relationship with the owner of that business?
Not to my knowledge.
That's all my questions for now.
Okay. Counselor Norris?
I'd like to thank Deputy Depot for asking all my questions. Excuse me for being late to the party, but I will first tell you, I'm glad you explained a lot of what you just said. Going through it myself at work, I know exactly what you're talking about on the cost of running those, the new lines could be quite hefty. But I do get a lot of, I can't believe a city is buying property somewhere else. So I'm glad you articulated that it really wasn't cost effective, but I don't know if that sits well with a lot of taxpayers, but I appreciate what you have to do. I do have to ask one question. So I think you said IT is what needs to move?
Mm-hmm.
And they need 3,300 square feet?
That was the calculation done, done by the study in 2019.
2,400.
2,400 plus storage.
Okay.
3,300.
Okay. Now, I understand the storage part and all the equipment, but how many employees are we talking about?
Eleven people.
Eleven people?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Could somebody walk through, because the question about it being in the town versus being in the city, I want to make sure that we exhaust that conversation about what you guys looked at in the city and how you went about it and, and the lease versus own and those kind of things. Because I know the committee spent quite a bit of time doing that, and I want to make sure that that information is out there, one, so that the council can understand it, but two, also that the public can understand it. So can somebody walk us through that?
Do you want me to go through it?
Yep.
So for our property search, we had some specific targets. Primarily, although we did look at leased properties, we were primarily interested in properties that were for sale, suitable for office space, definitely with proximity to both the municipal building and the operations complex. We needed certain aspects to be existing or inexpensive to implement, such as ADA compliance. That can be very costly, as we found with 352 Thames. And we also needed ample parking. For the purposes of the search, we were looking between 2,500 and 3,000 square feet. During the past months and somewhat prior to that, we've looked at over 30 properties. We've reviewed, reviewed 30 properties that have been presented, and we've visited one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine, 10, 11 properties. We've reviewed 11 properties on site to see if they were suitable. Some were in the town, some were in the city. If you'd like me to go through the, the items that we looked at that were for sale in the city, that included 18 Thame Street, which is the property on the corner, formerly State Police Building, I believe. That building's been, is listed for 699,000. It's 11,000 square feet. It's been completely gutted and will require significant renovation.
Yeah, too big for our needs and stuff, so.
And it's too big, far too big for us. That was one of the properties that was for sale that we did go and look at. There were other properties that were listed for sale, which we did not look at. One was the portfolio for 359 and 415 Thame Street, 3.875 million. That's the Garbo and former restaurant property. That's 47,437 square feet. One of the other properties was 344 Mitchell Street, which is for sale. That's the strip mall where Pizza Today is. That's 5,456 square feet, and it's for sale for 1.2 million. And it would have to be retrofit to be offices because it's not currently designed for that. The last place that was for sale in the city of Groton is 49 Paquannic Road. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that property. It is ADA compliant. It's, the building itself is 2,471 square feet. The list price is 299,000 dollars, but there's insufficient parking and no opportunity for additional parking. It sits in the middle on a postage stamp with EB Parking all around it, right near the end of Paquannic Road, where Paquannic and John Street split. So that was not considered viable. We, we had no opportunity to have sufficient parking there. Although Dunkin' Donuts was very close. So that's the properties that we looked at in the city. Other properties that were for sale in the town included 317 Long Hill Road, which was listed for 449, 3,000 square feet. It was occupied, currently occupied by, with tenants, and there was insufficient parking and no space to expand the parking. We looked at 391 Long Hill Road. We looked at 100 Fort Hill Road, previously only when it was being done, offered as leased units, and that was pre-COVID. It's now listed for sale for 950,000, excuse me, 1154 Paquannic Road, 7,200 square feet. We looked at that prior to COVID, and that was listed at 895,000 dollars. That's the list of the sale items, the items that were for sale, both in the city and the town. After that, we looked at, or before that, during that, we looked at a number of properties, both in the city and in the town for lease. We looked at one, two, three, four leased properties, prerequisite being that they be ADA compliant. And we had a number of different situations, too small. Only the first floor was ADA compliant, and it was only 1,200 square feet. ADA compliant, but only 1,600 square feet. And one was ADA compliant on the first floor only, but it was a second floor property. It was the right square footage, but it is one we looked at pre-COVID, and we weren't able to obtain ADA compliance. The rest, we, we didn't look at. They were too big, too small, not ADA, or they were well outside of an area that we would prefer to be in, specifically up on 184, which took us much farther away from the municipal building.
Could you also walk us through the city properties that you evaluated?
Certainly. We looked at, well, we looked at this property. Obviously, we've looked at this for a very long time, and we have limitations here. But we also looked at 352 Thame Street on a recommendation that we review that because it's a city-owned property. We went to the site, and I'll let Bruce talk about that one.
And we went to the site, we looked at it, and then, and again, with the square footage on top, which is, it was only approximately 1,600 to 1,800 square feet on top. And one of the things, if we could use the pavement down below and stuff that for office space, that would have, may have been feasible. So what we did, we bought, basically, our architect is basically working on our conceptual design for the operation down there, because I wanted to get a second opinion because of a number of site work we need to do, drainage and all that stuff. And some of the things he picked up on too is that we, we wouldn't allow, because of the ceiling height, to use the bottom basement for basically office space and stuff like that, so. And the same thing with, what he said was the weight loads on it, it was a residential property, basically weight load for the floors and stuff like, would have to be beefed up on that too. And the same thing with, if only 1,800 square feet, it was that much, we would have to add another 800 square foot, feet, footage, basically, to be IT needs, because we could use the bottom for basically starch and stuff, so. And, and we looked at the cost of, all the civil work too, of basically all the parking area, the, all the drainage, it's coming off the hill, some of the retaining walls that we put down. And he, he came up with a, with a, I mean, a real rough estimate, approximately putting basically a half a million dollars in that property to get up to what we, what we would have to do, so.
And that would put quite a bit amount of money into a property that's intended to be a city park?
Okay. Counselor Carter?
I know this, this isn't the first time you guys have come to us, you know, I've, I think this is the third time, actually.
Third or fourth.
Yeah. And I know, since I've been a part of council, and I'm pretty sure you know my stance, I've, haven't been in support of, of this. And one of the main reasons is because it's not in the city. I love Groton as a whole, so I think if, if we had to go somewhere other than the city, I guess Groton Town would be feasible, so I'm, I'm with that, you know? But that would be like my last, in my case, that'd be my last resort to go to the town. But I'm not so sure that we are at our last resort. And I, I live on Thame Street, and I, I look at the empty buildings, right? And I look at the potentials, right? And the would-be investors into the city, right? And they also have the, the same complaints, there's no parking, you know, it's, it's not feasible, we have to put money into it, it's just not going to work, you know? So my thing is here is, how can we as a city, to all the investors that, you know, and we ask them to put money into the city, to come to the city, if we're not willing to put in the money needed in our own city? Simply as that, it just doesn't make sense to me. So that's, that's a hard pill to swallow, you know? Like, why not? Okay, it's going to cost money, but so aren't the people that we want to invest in the city, it's going to cost money. That's my first stance. My second stance is, question is, similar to what Counselor, Mrs. Depot had stated, or the question she had posed, why purchase as opposed to renting? That's my, that's my second thing. That's my, another question that I pose. I, I just, you know, we, we just got rid of a property, and now we're buying another property. So that, that's my other question, especially when the, the long-term phase, or in the long run, you'd like to move the IT department back into the city anyway. So my question is then, why would we purchase a building? That's, that's a question that, just to keep in mind. And then my third question is, when everywhere, and I work for the government, I worked for the government for a long time now, and every agency, every agency, besides State Police, right? Everybody's working from home, right? Everybody's trying to save money, you know? I know that the state has gone away from purchasing buildings, and they, they rent. And I know some of the leases that they rented are just, are closing down because they're asking people to work from home. In some cases, there's a lot of the workforce that are working 80% at home, you know? So I ask that, is that a, is that, is that feasible if we can't find this space to have employees work from home? And kind of do, to kind of work out the numbers, I'm, I'm not sure. You know, I don't know how feasible that is. Do we need the IT unit on campus or together all the time? And again, that's to me, I don't know. So that's just some of the questions I have before I, you know, give my yay.
Okay. So, okay, I'll start with the first one. And I appreciate your, your thought that it would be difficult to ask someone to invest if the city was not investing. However, we've approached this as, as we should. One of the, one of the founding components of the Groton Utilities strategic plan is to be fiscally responsible. And in order to be fiscally responsible, we have tried to find an opportunity at the very least cost that provides an asset for the city that has value at the end of the term versus renting. So that kind of answers two questions at the same time. When you pay rent and you pay renovations to a rental property, you're making an investment for which you get no return, either in, in the form of the rent or the renovations that you've, you've paid. So yes, I can understand why it would be difficult for us to ask an investor to come to the city under those circumstances. It is challenging, most certainly, it is challenging. However, it, we are required to be as fiscally responsible as we can. And when you look at the cost of the properties in the city and the potential renovation costs and the challenges that we would face for ADA compliance, for parking, it's not necessarily a fiscally responsible decision to go forward in a multimillion dollar property or investment within, within the city boundaries when we can make a much lesser investment outside the city. So that's the last resort piece.
Okay. Can I ask one question? If you might. It may be better if, could you, or not, could you answer the, I asked you the last question, but I'd like you to answer it first, right?
Okay.
So the purchase and the rental are all, and that's like, okay, there's a process, right? So you've been looking, or the department has been looking for a building or, or space pre-COVID, way before COVID even happened, way before what we know is possible as far as working from home and virtual and all that other stuff was even a possibility, right? It was all people just talking about it, right? COVID made that happen, correct? As far as working from home and seeing that things could get done at home, right?
Certainly, for, for many jobs, that's correct.
So my next question is, so is it possible, right? Is it possible that the job can still be, can still get done? Say we didn't have a space. Say this, this building wasn't, wasn't available, right? And I, I did hear you say it was a nightmare having some of your staff somewhere and, you know, so.
It was detrimental.
Yes, I, I wasn't clear with that because I don't know, essentially, I really don't know what you do, right? I mean, I know you're IT, so I know you're doing things that I can't do, right? And I just see it from one, and I know a lot of IT departments and a lot of people doing what you do, right? I see them working from home. So why is it different with, with Groton Utilities? Like, can you explain that?
So part of the IT department, we have two, we have two different sections. We have our support team, and we have our operations team. Right now, the majority of people that are working remotely are from the operations team because a, a great deal of the work that they do can be done remotely. What they can't do is face-to-face, every day interact with the support team. And that becomes the, the component that's detrimental to us. Yes, we have the technology to, to converse by Skype, but we can't jump into a huddle meeting. We can't, hey, this has come up, I just got this call. Those things that allow us to respond quickly and effectively by being in a group, that's been part of the, the detrimental part of having people not together. Yes, they function well, particularly the operations people. On the support side, that's very different. For the support side, that's face-to-face. We don't just answer a call and tell you to reboot your computer. We might, but there may be a printer that needs to be done. There's certainly always equipment that needs to be deployed. There may be other items and other issues. One of the police cars may roll in, and we may need to support the police department, and sometimes very quickly. So that was another reason for our search, is to be able to respond quickly for So that was another reason for our search, is to be able to respond quickly from a specific location. To either, either way, we would be four minutes, cutting on the lights, from either location that we would have to respond to.
Yeah, no, certainly. First, let's be clear, I'm all about the face-to-face, I'm all about the interactions, I'm all about the everything. But what I'm asking as far as talking about being fiscally responsible and saving money, right? From what, in my capacity, like I said, I'm not IT, but I see, like, if I, you know, I speak to the IT guys, they'll get right on my computer and they control it for me, I see it. If I have to, if I have to get my cruiser fixed, okay, what time, we're coming out on Fridays, they'll meet me at the troop on Fridays, you know? I'm saying that there's ways to do it and there's different departments and agencies that are doing that. So I'm, did we think about this? Did we come up with saying, okay, maybe we'll put this money into this to making this work as opposed to, okay, there's a building that works for us right now, let's hop on it because it's available, you know? That's my question.
Well, as you know, we've been doing this for a very long time, so it hasn't been, gee, something just came on the market, let's jump on it. This has been a very long search. And we have been through nearly three years of having the department split up with some remote, some not remote. And it's had its drawbacks, quite frankly, it's had its drawbacks. There are upsides. Myself personally, when I work remotely and I start at 5:00 AM and I realize at 8:00 PM that I haven't had lunch yet because I've been so productive, I love it. Is that good for me? Probably not. But certainly people are, or can be, very productive working from home. Not everyone can and not everyone has the environment at home that allows them to do that. You know, four dogs, three cats and 10 kids doesn't work, or whatever it might be. So certainly, even if we had the remote option, it's not viable for every employee.
Okay, and then one last question. So like long run, right? You purchase a building, right? And then what? What's going on with the building after, I know that you, yeah, long run, 10 years from now, what's going on?
So the idea is that five to seven years, they're working on the master plan, there are components of it in place, but the master plan is to have the facilities upgraded at Paquonic Road.
I heard that, yep.
At the complex.
But that's done, then what?
And then the IT department moves to that building. At that point, then this property, 391 Long Hill Road, owned by the city, is available for the city to sell if they choose. It becomes the city property and at the point of purchase, and it's the cities to decide how they would dispose of it if it's, I believe it's called excess property?
Yeah, surplus property.
Surplus property.
You'd have to come through council and be approved as.
So as the finance director, right, and you know finances, right? Does it make more sense to rent a building for five to seven years or to buy a building outright and have it for five to seven years in the hopes that we would sell it after all these updates that were made that possibly can and cannot be used with a potential purchase, to my personal?
Don't have a crystal ball, can't say what the real estate market's going to be at that point in time, but in theory you would regain what you invested in the property, at least what you bought it for. But again, we can't, we don't know what the market's going to be in five to 10 years from now.
And some of the renovation costs, even if we rent a place, we would have to do the furniture upgrade, basically the cabling for security. I'm not an IT guy, guys, you get this up. Believe me, but some of the stuff, we have to rent a place, that cost that we're estimating would have to be into a rental place too, so.
Yeah, and I'll use Thame Street, 15 Thame Street as an example, first floor, I'm sorry, second floor front or second floor rear, either one of those, you know, when they say vanilla box, that's all you have is a vanilla box. Right now, it's not even that, but they will bring it to that point where it's sheet rocked and has a coat of paint on it. But that still is going to require renovations, it's still going to require us to bring equipment in, furniture, so forth. Furniture right now that we frankly don't even have. We have, well, I have the one desk that I have, but other than that, that's the only, we don't even have desks that we can move. So it's certainly something that regardless of where we go or what we do, we would have to, we would have to have those. When we have employees working remotely, you do have other concerns and considerations. I know the telework policy is in, is in process for review right now, but there are, besides productivity and managing that productivity, there are other risks or exposure that Ron could speak to much better than I could.
Yeah, no, I was just saying that, just when I asked you that, I was thinking of a couple of different things. One of the things is, will you function, say if I don't vote, say if you don't get this building, are you still going to be able to function in other ways that you can function, you know? But that's just me, you don't have to, he doesn't have to explain that. My other thing too as well, because like I said, I've been on the council for a while and we got first, we got a right to first refusal for that building some years back for $200,000 and we didn't take it, right at the corner, you know? Now there's a potential building that we could have had, so it's just something to think about in the future, you know what I mean?
Which one?
The building, the old state police building, the old group home. When they sold that.
No, 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 how much?
We got, it was like, it was in the twos, it was like $290,000.
$799.
When we got it?
When they offered it to us, it was $799, that's why I told the council we're not even going to look at it.
And now it's $699, correct?
No, it wasn't that.
Yeah, right on, so it's $699.
It wasn't $200,000, I'll tell you that.
Wasn't $299 or something like that?
No.
Because we got, we did a right, we did a right to first refusal, correct?
It was a high, yeah, we had first right of refusal, it was a very high number and we did not have a use for.
Yeah, well, again, what we may not have a use for, I mean, we don't, I'm saying, it's something to look at, the buildings that we have or that we possibly could purchase, you know, that's just something to look at in the future, that's what I was saying, you know?
Yeah, we did, we did take a site visit, we did look at its current condition and it has been gutted, so there's quite a bit of work that would need to be done, it's an older building. So all plumbing, all electrical and additional site work, there's a small bit of parking in the front and there's property over to the left, sort of around the bend, all of that would have to be developed for parking area.
No, I'm not saying go there, I was just saying that we had the opportunity to get that, but we didn't.
But we have, we have made an earnest effort to look at the properties.
I want to ask some more questions, it's good.
It's okay.
Any other first-time speakers? Counselor? Well, because we've had a couple.
No, I appreciate that.
Ms. Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate all the great questions and really searching into it and the earnest effort because I know you've spoke a few times to us in reference to it. One of the questions I just had, you had stated earlier that somebody had asked that there was no search for property advertisement.
No, we did not place an ad for a property search.
So I wanted to lead that into, so other properties that are not advertised for sale or lease, that we do have empty buildings, would that be appropriate to look at them or not, or you just absolutely know that they wouldn't be available, they wouldn't feed our cause or?
I didn't walk Thame Street, to be honest. I have not walked through the city to look at every possible vacant property.
And I was just thinking about, and I'm not, I'm not all about what is and what's all the rules and regulations, but one of the things I was thinking about is Groton Heights because I know at one time somebody's going to move in there, I don't know where that is at this time, if that would feed our purpose because that's been empty for so long. Isn't it, that's the name of the school, correct? So I was just thinking about that property itself. Even though it's very large, you could encompass yourself in that area. And my other question was, as far as parking, how much parking is it by car spaces or certain lot size that you're looking for?
Well, certainly, we need to have a parking space for the employees and that's 11. We also have a vehicle because we do transport equipment and it's strongly recommended that the employees don't transport expensive city equipment in personal vehicles, so we do have to have a vehicle for that. So that makes 12. Then we will have the occasion of people, employees coming to us for a badge photo, to pick up their laptop, to pick up their phone. So there'll be some onesie-twosie ins and outs that would require a couple of other spots. So I would imagine worst-case scenario would be 15, but we're looking for at least 11 so that we can at least park our employees there.
And so how many, and so 391 would be able to supply that or would you have to develop that in order to create that?
It has that, it has more than 11 spots.
I know where it's at, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure the parking.
You got to remember, this building was basically renovated about approximately three and a half years ago too.
Fully renovated. Okay, thank you.
Any other first-time speakers? Okay, Deputy Mayor Depot, you go to the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple more questions. First question actually for the mayor, so when we did this space study, how many departments had a deficient amount of space?
Pretty much all of them, right? That was evaluated? I mean, there was.
I don't remember the report offhand, but I would imagine that most did.
Because we have, we have moved some people around and we've, we have moved some offices and we're looking for space to try to provide additional space for more people, not only in the utility but also in the municipality.
So I know.
I realize that didn't exactly answer your question.
No, doesn't, but.
Sue, hold on, Sue may have the answer.
The overall deficiency was 10,000 square feet for the entire building and every department had a, some amount of deficiency. And at that time, you know, we won the prize, the IT department was identified as needing the most space. But it was overall 10,000 square feet short for the people that were in the building at the time.
Does that address your question? Or better address your question?
Yes, and then how many departments have we moved around or added space? I know we had the space downstairs was redone for the building department, right? Because they didn't have enough space.
Moved the building department, we moved portion rec, moved admin, or HR, planning and zoning moved, with economic development.
Building officials.
Building official.
Okay.
We have not moved finance, we did move.
Customer service.
Customer service.
Expanded.
Expanded customer service. And we brought what used to be key accounts back over here. Business development now, but it used to be key accounts. They were, they were originally here, then they got moved over to operations and now they're moved back over here.
Is that recent?
It's in the last year, right? We moved key accounts back over here.
Okay.
And then renamed them business development like in the last six months or a year. I think that's it, off the top of my head.
And then, how, about what percentage of IT work happens in this building or for employees that are in this building?
That's impossible to say on a day-to-day basis. I mean, we provide services to this building every day, we provide services to the operations building every day.
Waste water.
And wastewater and Bozra, and so it's very difficult to say on a day-to-day basis. But certainly, there's a level of urgency in this building with the police department and with the city services, there's a level of urgency, so we like to be close by. Certainly, it's, I mean, if you, if you average everything out, probably at least half of our work is dedicated to city departments.
Does Bozra not have their own IT department?
No, we are the IT department for Bozra.
Bozra employees are GU employees.
Right.
Much the same as we, the IT department for the city.
Bozra doesn't have any employees anymore.
And so I actually wrote this question down that Counselor Piazza kind of asked. I see all the time people complain about the vacant buildings, not only in the city but in the town, that is a big hot-button issue with people. We do have some building owners that have left their buildings vacant. And you said we didn't look at all into whether any of those buildings would fit our purposes?
As I said, I did not walk the Thame Street or the other city streets to look at every vacant building. If it's not listed online or offered for sale under MLS, I would have no way to know about it other than to walk by it and see that it was vacant.
And then if, if after this meeting, or because all of us are discussing this, if a city building owner or a city building manager or something approached us with a building in the city that could be used for our purpose, either to purchase or lease, could we entertain that at this point or are we past the point of being able to entertain that?
The Utilities Commission has already approved the proposal to purchase, so certainly they would have to rescind that, I think that would be the proper protocol.
Lose the deposit.
Mm-hmm, yeah, loss of the, loss of the deposit and the expense we've already incurred. So if we're willing to accept those expenses as lost, then certainly, yes. You can always back out, I don't know what the other, the other fees would be associated with reversing the process at this point.
So we would lose, do you know about how much money that is?
The deposit would be like $7,500, right?
Okay.
Or less than that?
Yeah.
$75?
$75.
Okay. And then can you, I know you said a couple of times that the way the setup is right now has been detrimental to your operating the IT department. Can you give a specific example of a consequence or a situation where it impacted the work product, the way the setup is?
It does not affect our end users visibly. They ask for service, they receive service. What is fundamentally broken, I guess you could say, is our ability to communicate more effectively between us as a group and our procedural documentation. We, those things are falling apart, I guess to some extent, because we cannot follow a procedure that we had previously, we are scrambling to try to discern how we're going to secure information because now that information is off-site or potentially off-site at a person's home. So we're having to, in the background, having to scramble on a lot of those items. That's, that's our work, that's what we're doing, but certainly the face-to-face has been very, very difficult. We have, we struggle through projects simply because of that inability to, to work through things in a room and talk them out.
So is our data not cloud-based?
We have data storage here.
Right, but is the, is access, so you can off-site access data here, so if someone's working from home, are they storing documents at their home?
No, they're not supposed to be storing documents at their home.
So then what would be the difficulty in accessing?
They have direct access to our network, so that is an extension of our data storage. So there's always a concern, you don't want them printing something out, you don't want any remote employee, it doesn't matter if it's an IT person. You don't want them printing out, oh, this is a customer's application for service, let me print it out so I can read it. And it has information on it that shouldn't be, it's got PII, it shouldn't be outside the perimeter of our network.
Right, so I guess I'm just having a little bit of an issue, you're saying that the situation is not affecting our end product?
Our end users, I don't believe are seeing detrimental service.
And then, I guess it just seems like the urgency to move, I can't see a specific example of what that has affected for, I understand it might be unpleasant.
It certainly is unpleasant, it's been unpleasant for almost 20 years because it's been almost 20 years that we've been talking about space in this building and specifically for the IT department. So it's not an urgent matter, it's a matter that has gone on for this council and at least three previous councils and mayors.
And directors.
And directors. And unfortunately, one IT general manager. And unfortunately, one IT general manager. So no, it is not urgent.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Council McCain?
I also work in IT, so I'm, I'm pretty aware of the struggles that can happen. Certain groups within IT work very well from home. I am one of those people. There are also infrastructure-type people that do need to be in close proximity, in my experience, to collaborate with each other. It makes a better work scenario. It makes them function better. And I, I understand that certain, when it comes to documenting, when issues come in, you have to maintain a certain level of documentation of everything that happens, but when you're working remote and trying to collaborate with people, sometimes things can get lost and then you're behind and it's hard to catch up once you get in that position. So I do understand the, kind of, the scenarios that you're describing. So I just wanted to throw that out there, just coming from that same background.
Counsel Norris?
I'm sorry. I think I heard you say Breeze Line has space back here? Is that correct?
They, they've had space in this building since 2004.
Are they renting?
Well, Thames Valley Communications and then... Atlantic Boardland and now Breeze Line.
Several, same company.
Are they renting?
They were renting.
Okay.
I don't know the amount of the rent.
Like, space is an issue for staff, especially COVID taught us, we can't have eight people in one room. Right? So I get that. And I also understand, as you're saying, with working from home, sometimes you lose innovation, creativity, and if not managed, managed well, then you lose staffing engagement, all that kind of stuff. But it sounds like, as you said, we've been talking about space in the city for quite a number of years. It seems like the minimum square footage that we're talking about, based on a study, is about 10,000 feet. So we're really patching situations and ignoring the big issue, I think. I could be wrong. So I say, is this the perfect opportunity to grab hold of this challenge and say, we need 10,000 square feet? Where can we find 10,000 square feet? Is it, I don't know, in addition to this building? Or is it something on Thames Street? But realizing, to fix the problem, it's gonna cost $5, $6 million to do it, minimum. But at least we're fixing the problem, which is finding a lack of 10,000 square feet of space. I think that's what I heard. So that's where I'm heading with this, is like, shouldn't we take this energy and put into developing a long-term plan, which doesn't fit your needs like immediately, I get it, but at least then, the city as a whole has achieved a goal of space?
Well, certainly, part of what Bruce, Bruce is working on is that long-term plan and, and what the facilities will become for the utility. One of the first elements of that was to find a space for the IT department.
Well, swing space. Swing space.
And, and provide swing space. So we move, others move, places are renovated, and the master plan and all its pieces come to fruition over time. We're not the only ones with a problem in this building, obviously. The police department is, is another group that is very squeezed in their space as well. So any opportunity to try to relieve some of that space pressure should be considered.
I do get it. Thank you.
Several years ago, we did look at putting a second floor on, but that was around, what, $4 million, something like that?
Yeah.
Did Carlson not show you that? So I had the old planner, an old building inspector, Carl Smith, do some research and it was gonna be around $4 million. Then you run into accessibility issue with elevators and, and foreloading and all this other stuff, and then how are you gonna pay for that? And it was also the thought at the time that the residents didn't have, didn't have it in them to bond $4 million. So we decided not, because we looked at going up. We also looked at knocking out this back wall and going into the ground and building up. And I forget how much that was, but that was quite expensive as well. We abandoned both of those because of the cost. Sue? Oh, I'm sorry.
You brought up a good point regarding, I remember the discussion for, that we wanted to, to go above the ceiling. Would anything of the federal government infrastructure, would that be something down the line that could assist in some type of project like this? Would that be something?
I, I don't know, we haven't, we have not...
I know we haven't talked about it, but he looked at it.
I honestly don't know the answer.
Yeah, something to think about, so if, if that's available to us, that's all.
Counsel Piazza?
Okay, so I just wanted to go back to the Groton Heights. I'm not sure if that was really answered. So is that, is that a site that cannot be looked at in any way, shape, or form, or does that, do I want to say, does that compromise security?
That is currently being reviewed. At the town, there's a, there's a private owner they're working with, and I don't know what the status of that is. I also know that there's some brown fill remediation issue over there to the tune of about $1.8 million, just to get rid of the, the PCBs and the paint and asbestos and lead and things like that. And then you get to start, once you get it there, then you get to start with renovation and everything else.
Right, so that's what I get, so it's a lot of cost. So I'm assuming it's the same for Pleasant Valley, old Pleasant Valley, because we're going town, Pleasant Valley, I would repeat, town also.
The town's looking at what to do with Pleasant Valley. The, back here at Colonel Ledger, that is currently being looked at by a developer, and there's some things that they're doing in order to meet the requirements for the town, to turn that over to them to finish. And that's gonna end up being around 65 condos or something like that, right there.
And you're talking about Colonel Ledger?
About my Colonel Ledger.
Right, but Pleasant Valley is not something, Pleasant Valley kind of comes along the same line as Groton Heights with...
Well, I don't know what the remediation is. I know the town is looking at what to do with Pleasant Valley.
Okay.
All right, is, anybody else have any comments? All right, counsel, where do we go from here?
Take a vote?
I mean, well, hold on, before we take a vote. So do we, we can take a vote to move this to the next mayor and council meeting, or if the council's not ready, if you have additional questions, you think that they need to go off and do research, we can also bring it back to either the special cow or bring it back to the next cow. But I'm not sure how much more research they're going to be able to do, because they have research. So we had teams, right? And it wasn't like, it wasn't just Bruce and Sue. There were other members of the utility and the municipality that were on the team. And we had some members that were counter, right? So we didn't have, it wasn't just a bunch of yes people, it was, have you thought about this? What about that? What about this? What, you know, and one of my first directions was, I wanted to try to get, keep it in the city, if we could, because that's always important to me. But if we can't keep it in the city, let's keep it in the town. And we had talked, you know, several years ago, we talked about Animal Companion Hospital, or Companion Animal Hospital, rather. That was something that was looked at several years ago, I think, right? In that one?
That would be overall, Paquonic, Pass Sneakers, down there? Yes.
Okay.
That was quite a few years ago.
I mean, that, absolutely, but I'm, but my point in bringing that up is, is that was one of the places that was looked at because of the distance, equidistance between the municipal building and the operations. So Deputy Mayor Depot?
I personally, I'm not ready to vote on it, but, but I think moving it to the regular cow at the end of next month is kind of far off if we're gonna have a, the committee, the whole...
We are gonna have a special...
The special one, I would be in favor of moving it to that one.
Okay. Well, we're gonna get, say again?
If we move it to the February cow, we will not meet the requirement of the purchase and sale agreement with a proposed closing by February 14th.
Okay. Can we get an extension? See if we can get an extension. So here's the deal. Either we try to get an extension or you, you flip your coin on where the council's gonna go, and there were a lot of questions here with the council. So I, I thought that one of the things we had asked for was if the council, one of the, one of the things that had to be done was that the council agreed and that there was some flexibility in that close date based on council's approval, is, am I...
The due diligence period was 60 days. The PSA was, was signed on December 16th.
Understand.
60-day period ends February 14th. So decisions not reached by February 14th.
Well, we have, we have a special committee of the whole on the 13th, and we could hold a special mayor and council meeting after that, on the 13th.
That wouldn't give us the opportunity to, to execute the closing by the 14th.
Would or would not?
Would not. I don't believe the city attorney would be able to turn around a closing in a day.
If you have approval, he'd extend.
He'd extend?
I mean, think of it, if you're approved to buy, a buyer would obviously extend.
One would hope, yes.
Think about that.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just want to comment that I, you know, I had asked a bunch of questions, but in between, the reason that I have so many more questions now is because so many people, residents, came to me in between the last meeting and this meeting about this issue, that I would like time to get back to them with the results of this meeting and get more feedback from them. So that's my reason for wanting a delay, because I have a handful of people who have been paying attention to this issue and are really concerned about it, and I would like to give them time to give more feedback.
Okay. So how do we get here? How do we get there from here? Hold on. Well, counsel, I'll get to you, but I need, I mean, if you're saying we can't do it on the 13th, so we would need, you would need to know what questions the council has in order to consider a, whoops, sorry, let me get back to my calendar, in order to consider a special, another special cow, in order to meet this. So, hold, hold on a sec. Well, you know what? Go ahead. And then...
I was just asking a question, so voting on, voting, voting on this now, that just brings it to the, brings it to the council to be approved. It still has to be approved, correct?
Correct.
On the what's name. So if, if this moved to the next meeting, Counselor Depot could still have her week and answer questions and bring this stuff out, and it can still potentially be voted on at the next, at the next mayor and council meeting.
Okay.
So this does, this wouldn't shut this down.
Understand.
The other one would shut it down.
Understand. Do you think that's enough time? It's a week?
Is that a week? It's two weeks.
Two weeks. I'm sorry, you're right, it's two weeks.
Yes.
Okay. Counsel Norris, you had a comment?
I was just gonna say, I think they did a great job with their research and given us all the information that we've given. However, coming to council or not, I, I wouldn't be in favor of this.
Okay.
I was gonna say that too, to save your time, that I would, I was gonna vote no, either way. That's my stance on it.
Okay, so if we put the motion to the floor now, that it may not make it to go to the mayor and council, right? So...
You're not voting no to go to the mayor and council, you're voting no.
All right.
You're not, right.
Hold on. So my, all right, so hold on, my next, my next part of this, from the Roberts rules and from running the meeting, is typically, are there any other questions? And then, if not, all in favor, say aye, to move it, actually, we, we would, I would, we haven't got a motion or a second, to move it to the mayor and council meeting of February 6th. That would be my next normal step. And then council would vote on whether or not to move it. If you just, if the answer is yes, then it goes to February 6th. If the answer is, and then that, what that does is that moves this resolution to February 6th. That does not approve this resolution. It moves it to the mayor and council meeting so that can be voted on. Now, if the council votes down the move to February 6th, then we gotta figure out what we do from there. Right?
Can I ask a question?
Counsel Carter, you go to the floor.
So I think the two week, the two, it'd be two weeks to the next, right? I'm trying to work it here. So, so, and I'm just being transparent, like, I'm not in a, I would vote it no now, however, if within the next two weeks, there were certain questions, especially someone that you posed, as far as the availability and the spaces and whatnot into the city, if things change, it'd be a possibility that I could change my thing. But then again, that's gambling, you know? But from right now, I'm not in favor with it. But I will vote for it to go to the next, to the mayor and council meeting, so we have that time.
Hold on a second. Was there, is this something for everybody, or?
Our thought is that, in order to let the deal...
We'll keep moving forward. It needs to move to the meeting, and if you guys have questions in the next two weeks, the group will work diligently to address all questions, and then it's either a go or a no-go at the meeting. It doesn't, it's not the end of the world. It is what it is. George Scully was principled and he said he wouldn't have the city buy a property for a dollar. That was a quote. And he was just gonna vote against it out of that principle. It had nothing to do with whether he agreed with space or the business processes in the background. So...
Okay. Counselor Piazza, or did I step on you?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to understand, so if we did not move it to the mayor council meeting for the 6th, and as Deputy Mayor Depot was saying, to bring it to the 13th, if we were to do that and then move it, approve to move it, we could still get an extension, correct? And, and if we get an extension, I thought, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought I had heard that you said that the attorney could do an extension.
This gives us two weeks. If we don't vote on it?
Right.
They know that it's not going, we're not committing that deadline.
Right.
If we do, we get two weeks to give them their vote, but once we vote, it's done.
Mm-hmm. Right, I get that. I was just looking at the extension and how long the extension, and, and then, I'm just trying to look at, is the off, the, what do I want to say? If the extension could be done, we're not losing this, all this time and efforts and supposedly, as it's being presented, such a, I'm looking at it as like, it's a good idea, it's a good purchase. So I'm just looking that we don't lose it in the time that we're looking to clear all the things that the council may have, or the people may have, our constituents of Groton City have the time to respond, so forth and so on.
I would, I would want the council to send your questions to me. Do not send them to all, because I don't want to have a meeting. So you send them to me, and then we will get them to the utilities, and then we'll have a list of questions and, and that they will address. Everybody knows that their questions are, are asked. And then they'll be, you know, be ready for, on, on the 6th. And then we go from there, and if you guys are not ready to, I, so my recommendation is to move it to the 6th. Get your questions to us so that we can get them to the utility, so they can get them answered. You can talk to the public some more, and then we come to the 6th, and then we take it at the 6th, and we figure out what we're gonna do then. And in the meantime, I'm gonna ask the utilities to ask the question, if it doesn't pass on the 6th, and they need... and they need, council needs more time, could we get an extension on where we are now? I understand we're in the due diligence period, but can we, can we get an extension? And I don't know the answer to that, but if you don't ask, the answer is no. If you do ask, then the answer might be yes.
Certainly, if the, if the city council votes down the resolution to purchase the property on February 6th, an extension would not be required.
Understand.
It would be the end of the effort.
Right, but what we could do is we could have, so we come in on the 6th, we have a discussion, and if council is not 100% ready, you can then, using Roberts rules, not table, table's the wrong term that people use here, move to a future meeting, to vote on it at a future meeting, and then council can get additional questions answered. That, that is a parliamentarian way of addressing the issue. Councilor Sheffield?
I mean, the problem would be if they can get an extension, there's no guarantee you'll get the extension, and that's.
Understand.
Gonna be the problem, and to where if they can't get it, it's a moot point of even bothering to vote on it.
No, we move it, we move it to the 6th, we have discussion on the 6th, and then by this time, they'll be able to give us some answers, and the answer is either they can extend or not extend, and then if they can't extend, then the council will vote, and either your questions are gonna be answered or not answered, and then if you, if the council decides to vote it down, then the council votes it down. If the council votes it up, then the council votes it up and we move forward, and we close on the property. Does, does that make sense to everybody? Okay, so with that, I will take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of February 6th.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, is there any additional discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, okay? Thank you, I will be back to you with information that comes to me. Thank you, council. Okay, next up, do you, do we need to take a recess?
I need to.
Okay, go ahead. Is the rest of the council okay, or do we need a five-minute recess?
Yeah, it's five minutes.
Okay, well, we will take a five-minute recess. Clerk, we are in recess. You are.
All right, are you ready, Chief?
Okay, all right. We are back from recess. We're gonna call the meeting back to order, and we're gonna continue with new business. See fire purchase order for turnout gear. Chief Tompkins, this is your item.
Yeah, so, I'm just here, hopefully quickly, for, I, I came back in June, and we had purchased eight sets of new turnout gear. This is, you know, the pants and the, and the coats that the firefighters wear for structural firefighting. We had done our due diligence, we had vetted different manufacturers, and Morton Pride was the, was the best fit for, for us. So, we normally rotate, you know, buy sets of gear every year to keep the guys current, and that is what this is moving forward. We're doing it twofold. There's a price increase, which actually was January 19th, but I had a couple guys who were sick and have to be measured, so they gave us to the end of the month. But when I order four sets, it goes over the $10,000 limit, so, that's why I'm here, before you. Each set is around $4,200, somewhere in that range. Right now, it's going up, I think 15%, they said, like everything else in the world. But that's why I'm here, if you have any questions.
Any questions for Chief on the turnout gear? Deputy Mayor Depot?
So, just to confirm, this is a budgeted expense that we are on a plan so that we're replacing a few at a time, so we don't have to replace them all at once, correct?
Correct, we normally replaced three a year. I have 15 firefighters, so every five years, they would get a new set of turnout gear, and then their, the gear that they have goes in as their spare set so that they can wash their gear in between fires and things like that. And that way, they have two sets that are 10 years or less per NFPA code.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor, mayor and council meeting of February 6th.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, Bill, you're up, this is Public Works Sweeper Repair.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight to request approval to spend $18,606.56, and that is to repair our sweeper that we have. It is a 2010 unit, it's fabricated by Elgin. The conveyor assembly has failed, and that's the best we can do for our pricing to get the parts done on it. If you can recall, we did approve the purchase of a new sweeper, that was in Feb, November. Assembly is yet to begin in March. I expect the arrival for that unit sometime around June, July. Unfortunately, this unit now is down. This is a, this, actually, this unit is a mechanical sweeper. The new one will be an airless, right, so air is driven. This one here, the way it operates, the brushes sweep up the gutters, sweep it into a central brush, throws it up into the conveyor, that conveyor takes it back to the hopper, so it's really integral in the operation. I'm hoping to have that replaced. The rest of the unit is in really, really good shape. The conveyor part is down where it's taking all of the moisture, the grit from the street, the leaves, everything that comes up. We do wash it down every time that we utilize them, equip, the equipment, but as we disassemble it to make a repair, there are areas in there that you truly can't reach unless you disassemble it, in fact, you know, get right into it. So, I recommend that we, I would request that we would repair this one. When we get the new one in, it'll be our backup for that, okay?
Okay, Councilor Norris?
Does this, will this cost be covered within your 23 budget?
Operating budget, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this line item? Ron?
And based on the other sweeper being down, this is the only sweeper, so there is some urgency on this. So what we were looking for your approval is we didn't wanna just go and do it and then bring it through as emergent work that we've gone ahead and did the process, and now we're begging, you know, saying we're sorry after. So what we wanted to do was get kind of, we didn't move to the next mayor and council move, however, also get concurrence that we can move forward with starting to get this fixed and before they get the.
And not wait till February 6th.
So we'd still need to approve it February 6th, but at least we could start getting the parts ordered and, and here to get that sweeper fixed.
So instead of me declaring it emergent work and then coming back and saying, you know, mea culpa, where I'm asking to move it to the mayor and council meeting of February 6th, and at the same time, get concurrence to go ahead and start, so that, because it is the only sweeper we have left, and then it'll go to mayor and council, and when you guys approve it officially, and there are repairs will already be started. Does that answer questions? Councilor Norris?
I was just gonna ask, when do you usually begin street sweeping?
So, we do that seasonal, but I should share with you, so we recently operated the unit pretty heavily after we had the flooding down at Jupiter Point, Pine Island Road, Shore Avenue, all of those areas, it really came into play heavily for that, so it's something that I'd prefer not to have standing still. It comes up, we have these emergencies, we need it.
Sure, and then when the new one comes, we keep this one, or?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just wanna comment that there has been some discussion amongst residents, and I've seen it on Facebook a little bit, town residents, of how much they value our streets being clean. So I just wanna, you know, thank your department, because I think we do a very good job keeping the streets clean, and obviously, this needs to be repaired so that we can continue to do that. So to me, this is kind of high on the list of important things, especially when, I mean, it's taxpayer dollars, so if it's something that there is high on their list, I feel like it should also be high on our list to make sure that it's taken care of.
Thank you. Good point. Anyone else? Councilor Piazza?
So I just wanna make sure that we can actually do that, you know, go ahead and allow them to start the repair and then approve it later. I just wanted to double check we can do that, I'm not saying, questioning, I just wanna make sure that, yes, I can be done. My second one is I wanted just to, I'm just saying, 'cause this was like, something came up before about it. Also too, I wanna just piggyback Deputy Mayor Depot, when I first moved back to Groton City, I was like, wow, the street sweeper's out here all the time, and the streets aren't very clean, so thank you to you and your department.
Thank you.
Any other, is there any other discussion? Okay, all right. So with that, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of February 6th.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
Thank you.
And do I have consensus from the council to start these repairs tomorrow?
That's what I was gonna say, I was gonna say, it's not, it's not emergency, but it is, you're telling us what to do.
It is, well, it is the only, it is the only sweeper we have.
Right, but I mean, this came up before, so.
So I'm asking, I'm asking.
So it is emergent, but you're just telling us.
It is, exactly.
You're making a decision.
In this situation.
We need to order the parts.
We're doing the right thing.
We need to order the parts.
No, I hear you.
All right, Bill, go ahead and stay there, the next thing is city budget presentations, so it's that time of year. We'll do the highway budget first, and then we'll do police budget. So go right ahead, everybody have their budgets in front of them.
Okay. So this evening, I'm here to present the city's highway budget for fiscal year ending 2024. This year, we have an increase of 6.09 in the operating budget and an overall increase of 1.3 in the total highway budget, once we include the capital. The increase in the operating budget includes administrative costs to salaries and benefits, an increase in roads and streets contractual services to support a computerized maintenance management system, which is City Works, and the fee for that is $105,297, and contractual services for drainage support that I need to resolve issues that I have down at the Four Corners, down at the bottom where Smith, Aquanic, Eastern Point, and Thames meet. The highway capital budget includes millinery paving for Beach Pond and South Prospect Road, replacement of a 2005 Mason Body Dump, and a 1983 air compressor. Funding for engineering and installation of trapping, traffic calming measures on Eastern Point Road. With that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have for the budget.
Councilor Norris?
While Deputy Mayor gets her thoughts together.
Okay.
Let me get mine in real quick. So generally speaking, when you're speaking, when you say administration, that includes staff?
Staff.
So what do we, and you may not know, what are we talking in terms of perceived percent increase for salaries, and what are we looking at for healthcare benefits?
Ron, do you want that?
So, the current, for this budget, it was a two and a half for, for the salaries, and it's still early when it comes to the benefit and working with consultants. So we did put a placeholder of five across the board for the health insurance, for the pension, for insurance purposes.
Okay, thank you, and then the last question I have, so I'm looking at this operating budget, it says snow. I'm assuming, what is that, snow? It's not just chemicals, is it? It's not just chemicals, is it?
No, snow and ice control the tab for that, right? So that includes, so a percentage for overtime, and when we calculate that, what we do is we look back at the last five years. We throw out the high, we throw out the low, and then we average the three in there. And that's how we come up with that number for there.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions on highway budget? Deputy Mayor Depot?
So, I mean, my main question was, so our, we're sustaining the 6% increase in operation cost because our expected other costs, the roads, I keep losing my page, I'm sorry, the roads and streets, part of the budget is lower than last year because we had bigger projects on the timeline? So is that, are we sacrificing roads and highways maintenance to sustain an increase in operating budget?
No. So I feel very confident with the budget. We held a pretty tight line with it. What you'll find, when you get to the roads and streets tab, I think the second sheet on the top, you'll see at the top, $105,297. Now that is something that was new this year. Last year, we funded the City Works model to do stormwater mapping, and that model, that was a $60,000 fee. That will be going live within the next month, month and a half, and then I'll complete that piece. This will be phase two, and this will include a computerized maintenance management system for all of the roads and streets. So work order systems, you know, the ability to plan and schedule work. It's a one-shot deal. After that, it's set. But that really is the big bump that, you know, as Ron made mention, the, the increase, salary increases are moderate, but that really is what drove my number up to the 6%. So really, that's it. And if you look back on, so back on the third page of that, you'll get down to contractual services drainage, and you look to the change column, and it says a negative $30,000, right? So that is, if you look at last year's budget, we increased it to 90, and that was to, we normally have 30 there, and that covers all of the stormwater testing, water samples, et cetera. Last year, we included 60,000 to pay for the City Works model for the, for the stormwater. We subtracted that 60 out of it, brought me back to 30, and then I added 30 back in again to help resolve the problem that I had with flooding down at the bottom of the four corners. So that brought me to 60. That will go away too, so. But really, the big, the big spend on that is the City Works model.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
Sorry, just one more question. When I'm looking at the, just the summary page, so for vehicles, your, your budget for vehicles is going down by 28,000, correct?
Yep.
Are we still on track with replacing the vehicles in an appropriate manner to where we're not working them till they die, or at least we're attempting to manage that? Reducing that budget isn't going to negatively impact our vehicle replacement plan?
No, and that's a great question. So I can speak, speak quickly to that. So something that I'm working on right now is, is a new vehicle replacement plan, and to look at that. And, and it's going to be an important piece as we go forward. I've got it kind of drafted, I did bring it around somewhere here, somewhere here, but cutting back there, we're in a really good shape. Some of the things that we need to look at are, you know, it's not always just a safety thing, you know, reliability, as we just talked about with the sweeping pieces of that, you know, taking an assessment of what we have for vehicles in the floor, age, you know, mileage, point of use, criticality of use, you know, the need and that. So I think that new, once I get that procedure in place, I think we'll be in a really good spot for next year too. It's just something that I'm looking at, especially this year, is setting ourselves in a good spot as we go forward. The computerized maintenance management piece, I really, really like that. It's something that I've been using for years and years and years. It adds value to the, to the team. It'll, it allows the ability for a manager to, you know, have a backlog, to identify priorities, to ensure that, you know, basic things like we have the parts in hand before we assign the work. I, I want to look at also, you know, assigning work to the technicians, like a week block, you know, so here's your work for the week, you know, once you finish that, come back and see me. So it's not a daily touch, and slows things down, so the guys can also start to think to themselves, you know, this is what I finished up today, what am I going to be doing tomorrow? And not rely on tomorrow to say, hey, what do you want me to do today? So efficiencies is really where we want to go, and that's kind of what I'm focusing on. Thank you.
I'm off it. Thank you.
Councilor Norris?
So where would I find the repair that we just approved in your estimated lines?
Yep. So that'll be coming out of the fleet budget, fleet maintenance, and you'll see it should be contractual services, and also if, when we need that, but also right above that, vehicle operations and supplies. So it looks like about the fifth or sixth line down on fleet maintenance sheet. Vehicle operations and supplies, asking for, last year, we had $30,000 in it. My estimate of this year is $29,000, and I'm, and it's going to be all of that, and then I'm asking again for $30,000 for next year.
Sure. But it's so.
It's just materials.
Right, yeah, I got it. So in looking at this, I sense you are unbelievably conservative with your snow and ice materials in supply.
Okay.
Only because if we did about $28,000 in '22, I'm assuming you are in a multi-year contract or get a sign one this June for the next two years. So I, I'm saying to myself, that 61 is gonna go up another 5% or 7%. So I get what you're saying, taking the average.
Yeah.
I, I just, I think you're being very conservative.
Yeah. And it's, and it's tricky too, right? So, I mean, here we are, you know, coming into the, you know, beginning of February, right? And, and everybody's saying, I got a whole shed full of salt, and I guess what, we haven't had anything. But that can be consumed like that. So, and really, I think that's the best practice. We've done that when I was at Pfizer, it was just, it was the best way to get a rolling average going. Is it 100% certain? No. Does it give you a prior, a higher level of probability? I believe it does. And that's kind of where we work with that.
All right. Good. No snow.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Amen.
But it's really the ice, not the snow.
I'm not on call this week. Yeah. You're very welcome. You're welcome.
Any other questions, Councilor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm, so as far as I'm understanding, so all the milling and so forth of the streets here, I'm assuming that brings us all the way out to the budget for '24, that we're assuming that will all be completed, correct?
Yes. So the two roads that I have for this year, yeah, that'd be South Prospect and then Beach Pond Road, right down there, yep. Both of them are, they fall within the, the metrics. So we look at pavement condition index, a PCI score, and I don't know if you guys have seen that or not, but that's something that was developed a number of years back. We look for a target score of 70 where we don't touch it, and then both of these scores are low, they, they fall right into the range of where we want to go. You know, so there's a, you know, you look at the roads, and there's a category that's for preventative maintenance, you know, crack filling, those types of things. And then there's another category that, you know, where you go into the work repairs, and that's where both of these roads are at. Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Norris?
I'd like to say point of information.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Question is, state funding for roads, paving, all that kind of stuff, does that come into city, or does it go to the town and funnel back to the city? Do we get state money for?
We, we receive the town aid road grant. We do receive that directly from the state, and what that does is that gets backed out of our, into our request to the town.
Got it.
So that is taken accounted for, and the, the request of the town is reduced by that town aid grant.
That's good information.
Any other questions or comments on this budget? Any hearing nine, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of February 6th.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing nine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, Chief?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilors. First thing I would like to do is apologize for anybody that had to cram over the weekend, over the, your mail delivery. Apparently, it was delayed, not as timely as I believed it should be, and I believe we've corrected that issue. I had a discussion this morning to correct that, so I apologize for that. Tonight, I bring you the City of Grand Police Department budget for your consideration. This budget, as you know and fully aware of, is a fully loaded budget, which presents all costs related to the operation of the police department. As in my previous budgets, budget, I have held the line on operational increases. Everything stayed zero across the board. With that being said, you know, the country is presently suffering from inflation rate hovering around a 7.1%. This affects fuel prices, maintenance costs, insurance costs, such as that. As you can see in our budget, or my budget, although I do have an increase, it's much lower than a 7%. It's a 3.30 across a total increase, with a total increase of $193,605. The bulk of these increases are related to general support. This includes medical insurance and pension costs, along with other non-departmentals. Other causes relate to vehicle maintenance and fuel costs, which you'll see on page one, two-thirds of the way down under general support, which went up 16.67% each. An additional increase is 20, I'm requesting is $25,000, and that's under general material and supplies related to one of my CIPs, which is, in an effort to reduce the speeding within the city and the roadways, we've had numerous complaints. I only have one speed trailer to put out. I do have officers out there running radar or laser, but this request is for four speed signs. As you will see, they are, they let everybody know the, the speeds that is the red, the road is presently on, and the present speed that they are going. I can get into more detail with that. They're movable, they'll be solar charged, they're traffic accountable, there's a flashing warning. So we will be able to get how fast people are going, what time the most traffic is going, and how fast they're going to peak times that we should put our officers out there, to then enforce it physically and take action upon those individuals going over the speed limit. Over the past year, we've continued to improve the functionality of our police department by updating our patrol fleet and our dispatch center. We just put all new monitors in the dispatch center, made it more efficient, as well as upgrading our body cameras. We just got a whole new set of body cameras that were replaced for free, part of the program. I'm pleased to report that our camera expansion plan, our camera expansion plan has moved further into the implementation stage with four cameras being ordered. We're just waiting for them to come in. As far as the logistics of placement, locations, and communication transmission, and power supplies have already been worked out, so we're just waiting for them to come in, for us to put them up. All of these cameras were on grants, as well as the other four that we have coming in is also on a grant, so that will, no cost to the city residents at all. With that, I thank you for allowing me to present this budget for your consideration, and if there are any questions, I will make every effort to answer them to your satisfaction.
Okay, we'll open the fourth questions. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I really like the idea of the speed signs. I think, like I said, about a different thing that is high on the priority list for a lot of residents is that people are speeding. So to me, those are things, that's where we should kind of be directing some monies as the top priorities of the residents, since they're the ones paying taxes. And I think that's a good plan to kind of try to help that situation. Sounds like it'll help. So I really like that. There was one thing in here. I know, again, this is kind of a small number, but just as an example, under professional development, your budget is $15,000, but 22 and your estimate for 23 is well over that. Is there a reason why you keep the budget at $15,000 for that item? And I'm guessing this can probably be an example for other items in the budget as well, so I'm kind of picking on that one.
No, that, that's fine. We have had some promotional, promotions to rank a supervisor at times, and that requires additional special training that we sent to Roger Williams University for a week and a half, as well as the post-accreditation. They have supervisory schools as well. We mandate that they go there so they can learn the next step up and their further responsibilities. So our increase have gone up in that area. At this point, I don't know how many supervisors, we're pretty much in place with supervisors now, so our command presence, I mean, the captain has gone to FBI LITA program to get her up to the administrative part, our executive branch training, which she came from a patrol to a sergeant, and now she's the captain, so we brought her up to there, which I just finished as well. So I finished all three levels of the FBI LITA. The captain is scheduled for her third class. And so my plan for the higher educational levels, I think, is at a stale right now, so I went back down.
So you don't plan on, you plan on that staying at $15,000? You don't plan on going over budget in that line this year?
I do my best effort not to.
Thank you.
Councilor Norris?
If you can just help me read some of this. So what is $47,000 data processing on page two?
Um, where was that? Forty, 2,000?
Well, no, I'm sorry, it says data processing, budgeted 47, estimate 62, and then going back to 47. Is that what you just talked about?
Well, that wasn't the line item, but it's another example.
Oh, data processing, up at the top?
Sorry.
Okay. So the data processing covers all the copy machines, lease fees for the computer and dispatch aided, computer aided dispatch, records management, mobile software, collect terminals, and all those kind of things. We did just pay all our fees for those.
Sure. And then under the very next one, PM Town 5300, it says special events, special events, materials and supplies. Like, can you give me an idea of what special events you are leading to with what saying?
Correct. Special events would be salaries for homeland security type events, such as sub-launches, fireworks events, or any kind of demonstrations.
Right. And then keep going.
Mm-hmm.
Heartened hypertension.
Yes, sir.
What is that?
Heartened hypertension.
I know what it is, but.
Right. Why it's $10,000, I'm, I'm not sure. Go ahead.
There are still some retired officers and current officers that are under heartened hypertension, so these will be claims that come through for, for prescriptions and types of things that were heart, heart and hyper, yeah, related.
Wow, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilor McGee?
I just have one question. What is longevity?
Longevity is a contractual thing that we, we like to keep our officers as long as we can, because we've trained them, and we've, they've developed into great personnel. So they get a percent, percentage of their annual salary for as many, I don't know if it's five years, 10 years, 15, every year, after a certain amount of time, they get five years, 10 years, 15, every year, after a certain amount of time, they get a percentage for longevity, for staying here.
Councilor Norris.
I'm sorry, I did have one last question. So school crossing guards?
Yes, sir. We have a school cross, well.
But so both the school district doesn't have in their budget or higher?
Correct.
Okay.
We have not gone to them. We have never, we've had them in the past, school crossing guards in the past. Then all our elementary schools have moved out. Now that one is back, we now have to have a school crossing guard right at that intersection of Brandy Gav. They've always been on our budget previously. I believe it was New London, had at one point the Board of Ed did pay for it, but now they don't. And I believe Groton Town is the same way. It's, they pay for theirs as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Piazza.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I don't think per se I have any questions reference budget. I think a lot of the questions have answered anything that, if I even thought of. But I do wanna say that I really appreciate the Groton City Police. I, I think they're top notch, to tell you the truth. And I just wanna say I'm thankful for the traps that you're gonna set up and more. I did send out an email, 'cause I think that'll help as a school bus driver. I think it's very important that we have the crossguards, and they're really on top of it. Usually, I'm pulling up to the signs, they're, they're ready and so forth and so on. Secondly, is because they're, because of speed traps, I'm assuming that's going, that does donate to, we have so many people going through reds, so many. It's unbelievable. And it's, we just can't even count them. So I'm glad to hear that that's, because I think that is a donation to everybody in a hurry, and that's what they're doing. They're just going right through the reds. And it's a huge concern for us, 'cause I do, specifically on Meridian Street, I have, I don't even cross the students anymore. I just pull up. I mean, 'cause it's just so dangerous. It really, really is. So I'm thankful for crossing guards and putting up the speed traps. I really am.
Deputy Mayor Depo.
This is kind of a subjective question. What, what item in our budget do you think that the town is most going to question? Is there, is there a spot in here you think that they're going to push back on?
The things that they've gone after in the past are usually our vehicles requests and any extra things. Like, I know they went, they questioned the town last year when they went to purchase the speed, the rate, the speed trailers, the speed, speed signs. I know they, they asked them about that, but eventually they did pass it.
So the, the town has purchased those speed signs?
Last year, they did. Yes.
And our budget request for vehicle reserve fund and equipment is the same as last year?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Councilor. Sorry. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
Those are for three soft cars. Our fleet is pretty much up to speed on patrol.
Yeah.
But our soft cars, right now, the ones that I would be looking to replace are a 2003 Chevy Lumina, a 2006 Chevy Lumina, and a 2008, which all have over 140, 118,000 miles on them. So the cost to repair them are being more worth, or less cost.
Thank you.
Councilor Norris.
More of a statement, and I truly hope all your officers get to hear this. Groton City Police Department is outstanding. The level of professionalism, the warmth, and the way they engage with people is outstanding. They are remarkably quick. Like, sometimes, like, they're turning up before you hang up the phone. I mean, it, it's just remarkable. And I gotta tell you, I feel safe here. And this budget makes me feel safe. And I can't thank you enough for being in the community where I feel safe walking down my street and up the corner with the dog at night. That is a thing we should be very proud of here in the city. I hope other residents feel exactly the same way, but I just need you to know, and please tell all your officers, all the way down to dispatch.
Right.
They're incredible.
I thank you for those kind words, and I, I appreciate all my people, and I will let them know.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of February 6th.
So moved.
Second. We have multiple motions in the seconds. Are there any additional comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll take a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1-206 Bravo to discuss litigation to include Chief Jenkins, Captain Lito, Ron Yuhas, Mayor, and Council.
So moved.
Second.
We are in executive session, so we'll need to, yeah, we're gonna clear the room. What's that? Do, do we not? All right, we'll vote. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'll be, I'll be ending the stream, because you will be going into executive session and coming out. I said I'll be ending the stream, just so everybody knows.
Ending the stream, and then I will give you the, the time that we're out of executive session, or actually the time that we're back into regular session, in, out. Right.